...part of the meeting, we just have something called a public hearing that we have to do quickly. So you can watch and enjoy it, it's very interesting. You get to hear me talk for about thirty seconds or longer. So our public hearing is in regards to our budget, which the board voted on two weeks ago. And so this is a public hearing which provides the public with an opportunity to comment on the budget, and this is consistent with our state law, that we provide you with this opportunity at least seven days, but not more than fourteen days, prior to the scheduled budget vote on May nineteenth, which is in two weeks. So you have the opportunity to comment on all the budget work that we have prepared and submitted to you over the last three or four months. To remind you, this is a fifty-eight million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget that we are presenting to the public. The tax levy is negative point oh eight percent, which means the amount of money that we require to run our budget is point oh eight percent less than last year from the taxes.
Point oh seven.
Point oh seven? I thought it was point oh eight, sorry. And the budget itself is one point one percent greater than last year. And that difference comes from the amount of state aid that we received, which was about six hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received. That's additional money in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, as opposed to this current budget year. So the bad news is that the tax rate goes up by one point two five percent, and that's because the value of the underlying assessment is going down again. It has been going down for a couple of years. So the assessment of the land in the District of Irvington is going down by a percentage, and that leads the tax rate to go up by one point two five percent. But still a modest increase, all things considered, and especially since we managed to keep the tax levy at the tax cap for the third consecutive year. In addition, we added a couple of things even as we were working hard to keep all of our costs under control. We added a point four, which is almost a half headcount for world language, so we've increased our world language headcount by point four. And we increased our science, our high school science, by point two. So if you're wondering how you do that, well, teachers often don't work full days, they work in sort of segments of point two, point four, point six, and that represents essentially an additional class that they might be teaching, or additional section that they would be teaching. And that science teacher will be to add another project, Lead the Way, which is our STEM program at the high school. I think that's about it, so I'll turn it over to the public for any comment, since this is a public hearing. Going once, going twice. Okay, we're done. That is our public hearing. So now, I'm going to reconvene our public meeting, our regular meeting, so I begin that by calling the meeting to order. Welcome to all of you. And we start with our pledge of allegiance, just like at school. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, now there's going to be a math test. Did you bring your pencils? Now, we're actually going to recognize our brilliant students who are here tonight, our Destination Imagination teams. And for that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Harrison, and ultimately to Ms. Chapnick.
Yes, absolutely. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome. It's exciting to be able to recognize all of the students, and as Mr. Whitney indicated, if there were to be a math test, I'm sure this group would do very, very well. I have to say, it was exciting to not only hear all of your great accomplishments and your hard creative work, and all the problem solving that you've demonstrated throughout the whole DI process, but it was exciting to see you walk in, and see the medals, and see the T-shirts, and the camaraderie among you. You really have made us proud, and I'm sure have made yourself and the school quite proud as well. So I would like Ms. Chapnick to come forward, say a few words about DI, and the process, and our two wonderful teams we're celebrating tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Harrison, thank you, members of the board, Dr. Core, Ms. Miller. So we are here tonight to recognize two of our Destination Imagination teams. So we did start with eight teams. Fifty-three students participated in Destination Imagination this year, which is up from two teams, or fourteen students who participated last year. PTSA funded two teams last year with the support of IEF, and because of the generosity of time of parent and grandparent team managers, we were able to run eight Destination Imagination teams this year. And so those eight teams participated. Destination Imagination, for those of you who don't know, is a club, it provides an opportunity for students to problem solve creatively. They work in teams of up to seven students. They're given a central challenge, which is something they work on over an extended period of time, from when the club begins early on in the year, until they compete in a tournament in March, the regional tournament. They also compete in instant challenges, which are unknown challenges to them, that have a time limit, where they have to collaborate, problem solve, think creatively, work together to solve a challenge in a set, limited amount of time. And so these teams surfaces, the two teams, the fourth grade team and the fifth grade team, surfaced to move from the Mercy Tournament, which is our local tournament, to our state tournament in Binghamton. So in April, the two teams of the students I'm going to mention tonight, and we're going to recognize, moved on to the state tournament, and we're so proud of them, because it's of their hard work. They worked tirelessly. They went beyond the amount of time that we provided for an in-school meeting and an after-school meeting. They often met multiple times a week, on weekends, during vacations, and we thank their team managers, because without them, none of this really would have happened, because they were there by their sides the entire way. And to all of the parents, the volunteers, and the appraiser volunteers, we thank all of you too. And so to recognize you, the fourth grade, the imaginators, we have Margaret, where are you? So Margaret Khan was our team manager for our fourth grade imaginators, and on that team, you can stand, should we have them stand?
Yeah.
And then we'll walk up, or walk once. So Tierney Kane, Kaitlyn G., Connor Kenny, Riley Khan, Kate McLaughlin, and Flor Santador Lopez. So we can give them a round of applause. Let's do one team at a time, just because there's Tierney.
I don't know if they're separated by team.
Are they separated, or no?
So you said Tierney and Kaitlyn, Connor, and Riley?
Yep, Tierney. I'll say them as they come. Kaitlyn.
Tierney, don't run away. Don't run away. Congratulations.
Turn around, turn around.
You got the rest of the board wants to congratulate you.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Connor?
Congratulations.
There you go.
Great job. Great job. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Good work.
All right, now I have to go.
There you go.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. Good.
And to our fifth grade team, the fantastic Feolians, who were led by Ms. Christina Feol and Osa Murphy. Christina could not be here tonight, but she sends her congratulations to all of you, Ms. Feol. But I, Osa, where are you? There's Osa. So thank you, and so I'm going to announce, so Morgan Balkin, Andrew Buxbaum, Jordan Eckers, Anya Murphy, Michael Salcedo, Meka Tamita. So let's give a round of applause.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, Morgan Shaw.
Congratulations.
You must be in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Michael, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. This team is bigger than the last one.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Can I say one more thing?
Please do.
So I really, Destination Imagination is new to Irvington, and we started last year, and so our fourth graders from last year experienced in the fifth grade, and we're hoping to grow it to sixth grade. So for anyone here, and for who's watching it, we do put a pitch out that there will be a meeting scheduled, and information will go out. We hope that parents will consider being team managers, because the program has had a really positive effect on our students. It's been a tremendous experience for all of us, and we want to see it grow in years to come. So thank you.
So as much as we enjoyed congratulating all of our students, we do need to acknowledge, of course, all those that weren't here, that participated in the process, because it really has created a great culture, and added to the culture at Main Street School, and all of our parent and grandparent volunteers that have been involved. But we also need to acknowledge Ms. Chapnick, because her hard work and, yeah, her hard work and dedication really made all of this possible. And I recall going back to the summer before your first year, before our first two teams, us having a conversation about this, and saying, you know, it's your first year, if you want to take your time, and she goes, no, this is awesome, we're going to find a way to do it. And so it was Joyce's dedication and commitment to this idea, going back almost two years ago, where it would have been easy to shelve this until this school year. So that seed work, and all that effort that went into place last year, made this possible for eight teams of students, and has really fed the two champion teams that we see here today. So Joyce, thank you very much.
All right. Back over to you again, for the superintendent's report.
So now, students, now we get down to the nitty-gritty. So if you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, you're welcome to. So, give them a second. Thank you all very much.
Bye.
Thank you, Joyce. It's the highlight of our evening. Oh, right, Project Lead the Way, that's right.
So, on with my report. A few great things to speak about. The first is an experience that we're fortunately going to be able to extend middle school students on this Thursday, when the Google Explorations program visits the middle school. And the board members should check your email, you should have an email from Mr. Lubinski inviting you to attend. But you may have seen some of the buzz in and around Google Explorations, and Google Cardboard, that idea of virtual field trips. So when we look at Thursday, we're going to have a great opportunity for our staff members to receive some professional development related to Google Explorations, and then we're going to have a series of hands-on experiences for our students, where Mr. Lubinski and the teachers have worked with Google to identify some virtual experiences for them that's related to items that they're currently studying in our schools. We've also invited, or Jesse's also invited, some members of the IEF and PTSA to come check it out, recognizing that if we see some natural matches here with our work, that there may be some opportunities for grant writing down the road. So we look forward to those exciting experiences coming our way for our middle schoolers, and thank Mr. Lubinski for all of his effort in making that happen. I do want to speak about our district water for a second. There's been much buzz around the country about concerns about the quality of drinking water, with lead that's being found because of old aged pipes that exist in many, many communities or buildings. And there has been, you know, throughout the city, there's been some concern, in New York, let alone other areas in the Midwest, where there's been grave concern about water quality. When this concern surfaced, we took a proactive approach, and we brought in a firm to do some water testing, and we are pleased to report that there are no concerns with any of the Irvington School District water, and therefore, there's no need to look to remediate anything. So we're very pleased that we're not dealing with any concerns about the quality of our drinking water. So that's something that is worth mentioning. As we know, we just finished three-eight testing, and always following that is field testing season, and we have yet to receive formal notification from SED, but from looking at a database on their website, we have been able to identify that Main Street School has been identified as a site for computer-based field testing, which would be the state's first effort in looking at administering standardized tests through the use of computers. I have now reached out to SED twice, in expressing our concern, because we have yet to install Wi-Fi at Main Street School, and we would have significant challenges in trying to administer the testing. Thus far, much like our experiences last year, there have been no responses to my communication. And Ms. Benedetto, who is our testing coordinator for elementary level, is reaching out to some of her contacts now through the RIC and the like, to see where, how we can get somebody's ear to have a conversation about this. So we certainly would like to sidestep this, shall we say, opportunity, and, you know, put this opportunity.
I think if they change our Wi-Fi, I think we should just go for it.
Or if they just sped up the process, and all the approvals for us to be able to install our Wi-Fi, that would be welcome as well.
Add some air conditioning, too, while they're.
While they're at it.
Maybe this is an interesting opportunity to do nothing, and literally don't administer the test, and see what happens.
Yeah.
Right?
We could always, we could always, let's see what comes back. I saw Joyce's eyes just get real wide.
You're the guinea pig, Joyce, how's that?
The worst thing they could do is fire the.
Joyce, when the box, any boxes or instructions come, just mark return to sender, right? So, and then the final thing, the final thing I would like to make mention of, again, just a bond update, that we're moving forward with our bond-related capital projects on tonight's agenda. The board will award contracts for the Dowslane Univent project, and boiler control upgrades, the middle school vestibules, and the renovation of one of the high school restrooms. In the coming days, we hope we will be able to resolve the final details associated with the field point easements, and then be able to award, shall we say, the field-related bids, which include, of course, East Field, Zarrows Field, Ole Track, and the middle school, Dust Bowl. It's possible, and looking to the board members, that once the details are worked out, and hopefully the next couple of days, that we'll need to call a special meeting to award these bids. So as soon as we have that information, we'll be in communication with you.
Well, it's probably very likely, since our next board meeting isn't until June seventh.
In principle, would we be permitted to award those, either the election, when we actually do literally hold a meeting?
In principle, we would, but from a timeline standpoint, that could be problematic.
Yeah, we want to do it before then.
We need to be under contract, so that prospective contractors would be able to order the necessary materials, to have the necessary lead time. Dr. Core, would you like to talk about the wonderful event that happened here on Saturday?
So Saturday was our first annual science fair. It was amazing. We had over seventy students present, and I think there were so many pieces about it that were impressive, but as you walked around, and you saw, you know, first graders presenting their work, along with our students in the research program, which was incredibly impressive, what the work that they're doing, and they love to explain it and share it, you really just saw, like, this amazing path. And Lisa Armagon, she had a vision for making this happen, and she was incredible. She connected with every one of our building principals, with teachers, she was in our schools, talking to kids, and it was really a collaborative effort. And we publicized it a lot, and we got, I think, in the first meeting, we thought, I don't know, maybe we'll get thirty people. So we were incredibly pleased with how many people. So between Lisa Armagon's vision, and Young E. Clinton's coordination and planning, along with the committee, the day went off without a hitch. There just wasn't one piece that didn't work out. We're in the process, actually, we just created a survey, we're going to get feedback from our participants, to find out if there's something that we could do differently, better, or what they loved about it, what they didn't like about it. And we're ready to pick the date for next year's science fair. And we're hoping to actually pick a date in between winter and spring sports, because that was definitely a challenge, so.
But I was also inspired to have the throughway guy there describing the bridge.
Tappan Zee Bridge Project, that was, it was fabulous. It was such an amazing, it was such an amazing, his whole, his visuals, every piece about it was really, really thoughtful. And I know that they would love to come and get into our schools, and it's a great link to PLTW for those classrooms, so we'll see what we can work out.
Great, great, thank you, Raina. And it was an amazing experience. The kids were outstanding, the product, work product was so exciting. And to me, one of the things that was really testament to the experience, was to watch the kids' enthusiasm, and then the desire they had to want to share their projects, and their, and talk about their research, and then their thinking about next steps, and some of them wanting to extend their current research or ideas that they had already for some other exploration. So it really, I think it was a bug for the kids, so it worked out great. Bev, would you like to say a few words about our walking school bus, which is now humming along?
Sure. Well, if you remember, the walking school bus is part of the Safe Routes to School Grant, and it's really taking off. Last week, it was reported that there was about sixty children that walked on the walking school bus, about forty-five from Dowslane, and about fifteen from Main Street School. And it's really encouraging that of the Dowslane students, some of them walked over two miles to school with their parents and the school bus. So it's really a successful story. Also part of the Safe Routes to School, another segment is a bike safety. So Maura has planned for a bike rodeo on September eleventh at the farmer's market at Main Street School, and there will be people there to inspect children's bikes for safety, teach safety, there will probably be some games, and giveaways, et cetera, to encourage kids to not only bike to school, but to bike safely. Good program.
Any question? So I think it was funded by the Safe Routes Grant.
Yes.
Which, is that money expiring this year? Is that my understanding?
Yes, expires this year, and then after June thirtieth, then the program will be either taken over by PTSA, or the Village, or just all volunteers.
Okay.
Do either Dowslane or Main Street have bike racks, where they can bike their?
They do have some bike racks, the schools do now, and we're going, through the grant, we're going to be ordering some more bike racks.
So it has been great. On Thursday morning, I actually had the opportunity to join the walking school bus, and they gave me the meeting location, in the corner of Broadway and Main Street. So in my mind, I pictured turning around and walking down Broadway, but we actually turned and went down the hill, down Main Street, and then walked kind of the back way up to Dowslane. And it was just a great experience, the kids talking, looking at the dialogue that was, that was occurring. Students, when we'd go to cross the crosswalk, students had stop signs that they would hold up to stop the traffic. So it really reinforced pedestrian safety practices, but ultimately, it was just really a good time, everybody chatting and enjoying the stroll to school. So it was a good time.
Thank you.
Good.
All we have, sir. All right, so now we have comments from members of the community, which, at this point, is just Mr. Graber.
What you got to say?
All right, thank you very much, sir. We will move on to Ms. Chapnick.
Did we ever accept the agenda?
No.
Oh, thank you, John, we didn't. I was, thank you very much for reminding me.
Before we recognized the students?
Yeah, I missed that because of the hearing.
So exciting, having the.
Yeah. Oh, it was the pledge of allegiance, and then I went straight to the students, you're right. Can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So I actually have a question on the agenda.
Yes.
And that is, do we have a place, well, do we generally have a place for board members to raise new items?
Yeah, that's at the very end, that's.
I don't think it appears there explicitly.
It's always been at the very end.
Yeah, I know, I thought so, I'm trying to see.
Board of Education discussion, that's where we.
Yeah, this doesn't say new. So, what I was going to ask, maybe this is the appropriate time to do it, since we have a, our, the candidates for the board are running unopposed, and barring any highly unforeseen circumstance, we know who our board members are, incoming board members are going to be. Do we want, is it possible to include them in our communications to some extent, in, you know, meetings before?
Yeah, I had asked Chris that very question, like, a week ago, I think.
Yes, and what would be proper protocol, once they are elected, they're able to then join, with signing, you know, of course, agreements, non-disclosure agreements, would be able to then begin to participate in executive-level content, and a discussion in, with, our regular board communications would be shared with the new members.
But not before then. We couldn't, we couldn't accelerate that process, since it's basically a foregone conclusion that they're going to be.
It would be outside of normal protocol, it's a question we could ask council, if the board would desire.
We can ask Gus.
Yeah, I mean, there may not be any opportunities, but we do have a special meeting.
Right.
They're not voted in yet.
Right.
Was it Mount Pleasant had a write-in candidate that won last year? I don't think it's going to happen here.
I would have heard about it, probably, someone who's likely.
It is though that if, within NDA.
We could always expel them if they actually.
Hey, almost anybody can, is a pence in some of that process. So that would be the point, since they're going to be signing an NDA anyway, the district is protected from a non-disclosure perspective.
It would also give them a chance to bail out, if they decide they can't stand it.
Why don't we just check with Gus?
I made a note.
Yeah.
I will, I will email Gus in the morning.
It's not big enough for us to take it over Gus's head.
No, 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 no. And again, the amount of material between now and then, just like, it could be really minimal. So that was, anyway. I cheated and raised it early.
Thank you. We just need to vote on the agenda, since you guys moved it. So, are I'm favor the agenda tonight?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, John, as always. Sharp aye. Back to Joyce.
Now that you're accepted.
So Ms. Chapnick, while you're setting up, I will begin to chat a little bit. As the board, and hopefully the community is aware, we've set aside our presentation time during the last four meetings of the year, to hear from our leadership teams from our respective schools, to talk about the work that they're leading on both the curricular front, and other school-based initiatives. So tonight, we have the good pleasure of hearing Ms. Chapnick, and allow her to brag a little bit about the good work at Main Street. So Joyce?
Thank you, Doctor.
Where's yours?
So, good evening. Thank you, members of the board, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, Ms. Miller. I am proud to be here tonight to share the work that Main Street School has undertaken this year. You will hear many things referenced that Deb and Meg shared last week, because it's a continuation or build from the experience that our students have K-three, when they come up to the four or five building. So an example of that is just the picture on the screen. Deb and Meg shared how they're developing citizens at Dowslane, with the development of recess and bus protocols, with the support of Gina Menendez. At Main Street School, we continue that work, so we've developed a common language for our students, and expectation for behavior, of what it means to be a citizen in a school So as you listen to the presentation tonight, you will hear, you will hear me talk about the work that teachers do, the work that teachers do with students, and then the opportunities that that affords for students to do independently. And so the district has district goals and theories of action, so I mentioned this in my presentation last year, that Main Street School crafted its own theory of action. So the Main Street School theory of action, if students are communicating effectively in whole-class discussions, small groups or partnerships, then they will successfully engage in discussion and questioning that promotes clarity, comprehension, and higher level thinking, and develop citizens of the world. And so ultimately, we foster the dispositions in our students, to develop citizens in our school community, but ultimately, we're building and fostering what we want for our kids to be, as they get older and they grow up through the school system, but ultimately, when they get out there in the world. And so in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a smart art, and that you'll see on the bottom of every slide, because I'll be referencing the dispositions, discussion, questioning, and higher level thinking, because it's through our work around dispositions that we, we teach explicitly into them, that we foster them with experiences for our students in the classrooms, and then beyond. So what are for our students to experience what they experience in the classroom? There's work that happens behind the scenes with teachers. And so you heard Deb and Meg share with you last week, the workaround, the curriculum workaround, understanding by design. And so also at Main Street School, that work is underway, and we are fortunate to have the early release days, and the late arrival and superintendent's conference days, to provide opportunities for our teachers, actually K-five, to articulate and collaborate around our units of study, developing our essential questions, and really considering, where are the opportunities in the learning for our students, where they can use discussion to push their thinking, where they learn about how they ask the questions, how they think about and consider an essential question, and then that fosters the opportunity for higher level thinking. So there are some examples up there of the work that we do. So for station work, you heard also with Deb and Meg shared, that Christine Rosner, our math instructor. the early release days and the late arrival and superintendent's conference days to provide opportunities for our teachers, actually K five, to articulate and collaborate around our units of study, developing our essential questions, and really considering where are the opportunities in the learning for our students where they can use discussion to push their thinking, where they learn about how they ask the questions, how they think about and consider an essential question, and then that fosters the opportunity for higher level thinking. So there are some examples up there of the work that we do. So for station work, you heard also with Deb and Meg shared that Christine Rosner, our math instructional coach, is doing a study group at Dow's Lane. We too, at Main Street School, we build on that work for our students. So similar to what I talked about, about the developing citizens and that common language around recess and bus protocols, we're doing that work around the work that happens in the classroom with our station work and our accountable talk. So station work is just students are broken up into small groups, they have a focused, targeted activity or plan or goal for that portion of their work, and there are opportunities to work independently, and then as a small group to discuss it, and then an opportunity debrief as a whole class. They rotate through a variety of activities, and then one of the stations, they always circulate with the teacher. So the teacher is able to push their thinking to that next level. Accountable talk is work that we've done at Main Street School through our faculty meetings for the last year and a half. So accountable talk is, we teach the kids explicitly how to talk in a discussion to push their thinking, so we give them, I agree with, I disagree with, that's the way to get them started. I want to add on to, you know, I found, and we root their talk into a text that they're speaking about or to a comment that someone else has made, and this fosters more purposeful, productive conversation to get to a deeper meaning. So we're teaching them, we're teaching for understanding. We want the kids to really understand what is the tasks that they're undertaking. We have a study group at Main Street School of teachers. They're, we're reading the book, How to Give Effective Feedback, and so we provide opportunities for teachers to learn about giving explicit feedback to students, both orally and in writing. So we're giving other ways for students to have opportunities to think about the way, to think about what it is that they're doing in their writing, their reading, in any content area, when teachers are, on the work that they're doing, teachers provide that feedback. And then through our, through our committee work, we have technology, character building, global citizenship, think tape, and school-wide reading community. And so these are the places where teachers come together and they think about, to plan and design, the work that's going to happen for the kids building wide. So we talk about the explicit instruction in the classroom, and then the opportunities for kids beyond the classroom. So within the classroom, so I just shared with you what happens behind the scenes, how does that work happen for teachers? How do they engage and how do they learn, and then how do they bring it to the classroom? So within our classrooms, our teachers are integrating the essential questions and during understanding. So they frame their lessons, and essential questions live in the classrooms for kids to come, for the students to come back to. So they'll start a unit of study by introducing the essential question, what's the big idea? What do we want our kids to learn? What are they going to, what's the knowledge and skill and content, but ultimately, what's the thinking that we want them to take with them when they move from this actual unit of study, when they go into another content area, into another classroom? What is it that we want them to think about and take with them? It's the thinking work. The accountable talk I just mentioned, an example of the accountable talk is book clubs. So within ELA, our students have opportunities to participate in small groups where kids, students read common texts, they read independently a certain number of pages, they are given us a question that they need to think about, or they generate their own questions, they come to the group discussion with ideas about what they agree with, what they disagree with in the text, and then they join their groups to have dialogue or discussion about what the text was really about, or they really understand what it is that they were, what they are reading. And for problem solving, our students have the opportunity, just another example for in the classroom, where we are providing opportunities for them to engage in discussion and questioning and higher level thinking, an example would be the Project Lead the Way. So you heard a lot about Project Lead the Way last week, and you've heard ongoing dialogue about it, but in our Project Lead the Way classrooms, our students are able to engage in collaborative discussions around a problem, and they work to find the solutions together.
Joyce, may I ask a question? The, in the last slide, you didn't really mention writing, because you mentioned talking, accountable talk with the subjects that they're reading and problem solving, it sounds like it's probably less about writing and more about discussion. In this, in this vein, what are the sort of things that you're doing in Main Street School to promote writing skills?
So everything up there has a writing connection. So while kids talk about it, you know, they use, we use writing either to develop our thinking before we come to a discussion, or, and/or as a reflection after a discussion. So any, I would say across the day in every content area, students are being explicitly taught how to, how to generate their questions that they want to address, they talk about the questions, and then they'll write about them. So in writing workshop, and social studies, and science, Project Lead the Way, they have their launch logs, so there's a writing component to everything they do, I just didn't highlight that.
Okay. Thank you.
With their shared writing experiences, lots of different ways. So not only at Main Street School are we, you know, talking about the work around our theory of action and in the content area and the academics, but so much of what we do in the heart of Main Street School is really our social emotional learning. So academics are so important, but they don't happen to the level that we want them to happen if we're not also addressing the social emotional learning of our students. And so they go hand in hand. So our work around social emotional learning is framed by the K-12 character building framework questions, which are right on the screen, what is fair, what is ownership, what makes a community, how is an action, action, and what defines who we are. And so we are also habits of mind school, similar to what Dow's Lane mentioned in the work, we teach our kids to be metacognitive about the work that they're doing. So we get them, we ask that they, we teach them how to employ habits of mind, and then we reflect on the habits of mind that we use to really understand what kind of learners our students, what they, for them to understand who they are, and for our teachers to understand who our students are as learners. And so an example of how we do that is in math. If a teacher is going to teach a lesson on three-digit division with remainders, she'll put up the teaching point, today, you know, mathematicians solve division with three-digit with remainders, and then she'll put up a slide that says, what habits of mind do you think you need to employ to be successful in this lesson? And then students will go off, they'll do their, she'll teach a lesson, they'll go off, they'll do their work, and as part of the debrief, she's not only assessing their content, like, were they able to solve, so on their exit tickets, were they able to solve the three-digit division problem with remainders? But also, there'll be a reflection back to, so what habits of mind did you employ, and can you give an example? So I had to be precise and accurate in my computation, and because if I didn't know that three times two is six, I wouldn't have been able to do such and such and such. I need to persist, because when I got to the part with the remainder, I wasn't sure how many to carry over or how many not to. So again, it's the same, you know, when we look back to our theory of action, it's about the discussion, the questioning, and the higher level thinking, pushing kids to really think about what is it, what it is that they're doing. And also up there, you'll see our global citizenship. So I mentioned earlier that the work that we're doing with understanding by design and our unit development, so we employ the same framework when we think about global citizenship at Main Street School, and we developed enduring understanding the essential questions for global citizenship at Main Street School as well, and I'll talk a little bit more as we continue on about that. So how do we know that students are developing dispositions and habits of mind beyond the classroom? So I talked about the work that the students, the teachers are doing behind the scenes, and then the work that the teachers do within the classroom to explicitly teach our students and foster the dispositions that we want them to have as learners and as citizens. But we also have opportunities for all students that are supported by teachers. So we have field trips, we have character building assemblies, simulation days like Colonial Day, Immigration Day, Mezzo America Day, Bulldog Day, Dare, Hype for Humanity, and Minute to Move. And so to give you an example of how we know that the work that we're doing in the classroom is transferring, is this past, this actually, last month, our fifth graders had the opportunity to go to the United Nations. And the way it works when you go to the United Nations is they break you into small groups of twenty or fewer people to a tour group. And so I get to my tour, and the tour guy called me over, she's like, I'm really nervous. I said, well, why are you so nervous? She says, the first time I'm with a student group. I usually tour adults. And I said, well, don't worry, you know, I have, I know it's going to go well, because in my head, I know the work that we do at Main Street School. But I said, I'm in the group, and don't worry, if you need any help, like, just call on me and I'll step in. So we start off on our tour, and right from the moment the tour started, from the first spot that she started to speak, our students were attentive, not only were they listening to the content of what she was sharing, but they were giving her questions and pushing her to think about the reasons why they selected the parts of the tour that they wanted to show, and how it connected back to the work that we were doing at Main Street School. At the end of the tour, she said to me, as everyone was leaving and saying, walking away, she said, I can't even believe, she said, no one would believe if that was a group of fifth graders on this tour. They asked more thought-provoking questions, they had more answers to the questions that I asked, and understood like where, you know, the relationship between how things take place around the world in relation to where they are. And I attribute that to the work that we've been ongoing with, what's been happening at Main Street School. So credit to the work that our teachers do with our students.
Joyce?
Yes.
What's Minute to Move?
Oh, sorry, Minute to Move is our physical, so once a month, our students work with, one class works with Ms. Shaw, and they come up with a plan, some physical activity routine design. We videotape it, and we have cameras, and we, everyone puts a smart board in their room, and we have a set time where the, it's like a brain break, where the kids get up and move, and they follow the routine of that class. And so it's a big celebration, and then we go right back to learning. But we know that there's research that supports, if we get up and we move physically, our brains will be more active too. So we try to find those times, you know, within the month where that can happen. So those were the, so now we've talked about what happens in the classroom, what happens with teacher, what happens for teachers, what happens within the classroom with teacher support, what are the extension opportunities for students with teacher support. But then what happens as a result of all this work is we have, we end up, we're working to create passion and beliefs in our students. And so earlier, I showed you the character building questions, what defines, one of them was what defines who we are. And when I think about that question, we could have hour-long debates about what defines who we are. But all the work that we're doing at Main Street School is fostering students' ability to really start to think about what does define who I am. And so we afford all of these opportunities, or choice opportunities, that students can elect to participate in. And so they're now able to take that work that we've done around our theory of action, all those dispositions that we explicitly teach and foster within the classroom and our extension, and now students bring them to, and you heard Destination Imagination is an example, the students who are here tonight, they're able to foster those discussions and collaborate and think creatively and problem solve because of the other work that we're doing in our classrooms. And so I just want to share one example with you about, so the garden, there are lots of examples up there, but the garden, I know you've all heard that we're building a Main Street School garden, and so last year, a group of students came to me, and they said, Ms. Chapnick, at Main Street School at recess, there's nowhere for us. There's, we want to sit and talk to our friends, or we want to read quietly, or we want to play a quiet game, and the only place for us to sit is on the asphalt. And so I said, well, let's talk about this and see what's going on. So we talked about their past at, it was fourth graders, we talked about Dow's Lane and what their experience had been, and the garden surfaced. And so my experience at the middle school had been, we had a garden, and Main Street doesn't have a garden, and Dow's Lane does. And so it started a conversation with the students about the possibility of building a beautiful space that students could have to use during recess, but also we could find connections to use at other parts throughout the day. And so a group of students got together, we met as a committee, fourth graders and fifth graders last year, and we, they all, everyone had an opportunity, we did some research, we read articles about school gardens, we looked at school gardens, we had a couple people come in and talk to us about school gardens and just the process of what it means to build one. And through all of that, the students decided that because we're habits of mind school, and so much of what we do is character building, they wanted a mindful garden, they wanted a place that tied together opportunities like having native plants and making, sort of honoring where we are on Main Street and in Irvington, but also that afforded the opportunity originally hoped for, was somewhere at recess for students to go for mindful, for a mindful space, and also if a situation arise, maybe somewhere where you could problem solve, all of those kinds of things. So the students had an opportunity to come up with designs, we critiqued all the designs together, and then from those designs, we melded them and came up with a final design. And then we said, oh my goodness, how are we going to build this garden? And so the students said, well, we need to have clubs, we need students who can meet regularly to have this club happen for us. And so with the fortunate support of the PTSA, this year, we do have a fourth grade, and we have a fifth grade garden club, and two amazing teacher advisors, along with our site committee, we have partnered, and they came up with all the ideas for fundraising from, we did a fundraiser at the talent show where we sold flowers for the performers, we did that at the concert, tried to find connections, garden fundraiser. And by January, we had raised about half the funds we needed for our garden. And then the IEF stepped in, we approached them, and they stepped in and said, we will fund the other half of the garden. And so we broke ground last week in the garden, we're on a timeline, but the weather is not really cooperating, but our fourth graders who started the conversation last year will have an opportunity to spend at least one recess, we hope, in that garden before they leave Main Street School. So just an opportunity to show you how the discussion, the questioning, the higher level thinking, all of that came into play in a, in a, in a real-life application for our students based on the experiences that they had had throughout their day at Main Street School.
Can I ask a quick question about the garden? So I love that there's a continuity now between Dow's to Main Street to the middle school, and I can't wait to go see the garden. Where is it located?
It's right next to the playground.
Okay.
Right between the gym and the school.
Great.
That was a question.
Might head over there soon. That was it, simple.
Where there used to be, that used to be grass then?
It was just a grass patch. And I think it was a safety patch because of, we didn't, we had to, we put in new fencing for, you know, for regulation, for kids to be in there. We're not really sure, no one really had the answer for that. So now, I, I could keep talking, but I think I want you to hear what kids have to say and how their thinking comes through from students. But this is a clip, Dr. Core had many of her colleagues come to Dow's Lane, you know, in Westchester and surrounding areas, we're really at the forefront in STEM education and on the elementary level, so they came to visit, and Dr. Core set up a visit of stations, and our, a group of fourth graders went down to Dow's Lane, and one of the stations was, they presented their experience in Project Lead the Way. And so I just have a short snippet, so they can prepare for the, they did the whole presentation, we met, they planned it, we can plan for all of that, but when it turns over to you of questions, there's no preparation for that, other than the learning and the experience that they've truly had in the classroom.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. Do you have any questions?
So you talked a lot about out-of-the-box thinking, you find yourself doing that more now with social studies and math?
I think we learn, I don't think we do have it, we're like thinker or creative or think out-of-the-box, but show Project Lead the Way, because Project Lead the Way, we're not, we're not always in directions, and we have to think, we have to really dig deep and think how, how we're going to do this, and how we're going to succeed in this, what we're going to, and what we're going to achieve.
So I, personally, your presentation is fabulous. I learned so much just listening to you, and you're all, all four of you are so inspiring, so I want to thank you. I'm just wondering, you're in the fourth grade, right?
Yes.
So do you ever think about what you want to do in the future if you get older? I know it's a long way away, but has this made you think a little bit about engineering as something that you might want to pursue more down the line?
Because now we know a little about it, so maybe, like, if you keep, if you keep trying to do this more and more, because everybody might miss this, as far as I know. So if you keep doing this over and over again, you're going to be pretty good at engineering, so it could be an achievement.
I do have a question as well.
So I have to ask, as your math coach and your math teacher, what connections do you see PLTW having to mathematics?
Well, if you, if you really focus on mathematics, you can have like angles in math, like you can like set it to different positions, so it'll do the right thing.
You mean the vax pieces?
Yeah, so, or you can like put the string, the goalie at a special angle or in a special way, in math, you can figure that out with math, which angle, so it does connect to math in a lot of ways, and just counting up pieces of collecting the best part.
That was great.
So that's just a snippet, obviously, we cut it, but you could get a sense of the thinking that our students are, those are fourth graders, the way they're able to articulate their learning and apply it to questions that they didn't have before was pretty impressive, and speaks to the work that's happening at the building. So the theory of action frames the work that we're doing, and in the first slide, I said, name the theory of action, and then I said, and developing global citizens, because ultimately, you know, we are shaping citizens for our community, but we are shaping citizens for the world. And so through the work that we do, there, our global citizenship work goes hand in hand with our character building work, and so we provide those opportunities for our students. So they're not just activities that stand alone as just activities, they're connected to the thinking work that we do within the building. And so for current events, they're integrated into a morning meeting where students will read a current event, and they'll use a character building question to frame their discussion that they have, and then they'll write about it, right? They'll have a reflection while they'll write about it, or it will connect to an ELA book that they're reading, and then they'll have to do both, they'll have to write a connection or a comparison, where they're talking about the newspaper article connected to the book that they're reading as a... They'll have to write a connection or a comparison where they're talking about the newspaper article connected to the book that they're reading as a, as a response to what they're doing. So teachers do use writing to integrate. And so one example, I'll give you a couple more examples. So for collaborative projects, for example, we had a, a class that read a chapter book with a class in Venezuela. So they Skyped with them, and they had sessions, they generated their own questions from their own perspective, and they shared back and forth during set discussion times. For Google Mystery Hangouts, we have students in a class who, that means that in one, the kids don't know where the other class is. They have to problem solve and think creatively. They have maps, they have Chromebooks, they have tools that they can use, but they can only ask questions and use the questions, the clues from their questions to discover where the other class is from. So they've done, one class has done quite a few, and we're keeping track. There are a couple pictures, and you saw there was a picture earlier where there were kids looking at a map, that's where they were trying to figure it out. Also, we also have, oh, thank you, please. That's what the clicker's for. Right there. This one. So right here, no. Right there on the bottom one, those are kids looking to, that's the Google Mystery Hangout. And then if you look down here in the bottom, we're creating a map of our books that we're reading, where in the world are the books. So in Google, there's a Google Map app where we can label where our experiences are, both where we connect with kids around the world, and also the text that we're reading. And so one final example is Malala. So earlier in the year, Malala, there's an article in Time for Kids, and everyone, you know, we all get Time for Kids, and teachers integrate it in different ways, but we all read that, that, the article. And then there was such enthusiasm and excitement around it and interest about learning more about her that Doc, Ms. Richardson and myself for the Parent-Child Book Club decided that we should read Who is Malala as one of our choices. So so many parents and their children decided to read that as their book, and we had really, really rich discussions at our book club. And that sparked an interest from a class doing an assembly, two classes every month, get together to do a character-building assembly framed by one of our character-building questions. So one of the, two of the, our assembly, put on by two of the classes, was about women who've had an impact on, on, on our experiences now. And so Malala was one of the women who, one of the women who was featured. And as a result of that, two students, one of them was in one of the classes, and her sister came in to see me and said that they had an opportunity to see the documentary He Named He Malala, and that we had to show it to the school, like we just had to. And I thought like, I haven't seen it, you know, I just looked it up, it's PG-13, like I thought I can't show that to school, let me get, let me get a copy. So I watched the movie, and it wasn't. So what we decided is we got a group of interested students together, we came up with a plan, and we decided that we would do it at night with parent permission, so kids could come with their parents if they so chose, and we would do it as a fundraiser for the Malala Fund. And so we did, we did it earlier last month, and we had over 200 people come to the screening, and we raised over $1,400 for the Malala Fund. So all, all of that work happens as a result of what we do in the classroom. So we're explicitly teaching these dispositions through all of the content areas and the work that we're doing, whether it's reading or writing, science, math, social studies. And it fosters the opportunity with teachers to support students in the extension activities, like the field trips where they're involved. And then it leads to students making choices, having passions and beliefs about what it is, what do I want to do, how do I define myself, what should I experience because I choose to experience that? And then I will, and then I leave us with, I think that Malala sums it up really best when I think about the experience for children at Main School, Main Street School. It's one child, one teacher, one book, and one pen can change the world. That's it.
Thank you.
Great job, Joyce.
Way to leave us speechless. Yeah.
Okay, let me go before I think to anything.
I have a question or two, but it's true. It's a, a great presentation, which anticipates a lot of the questions I would have wanted to ask, so thank you for, for that. And, and I love how you, you really give such tangible examples for, for the different areas. And I was almost going to ask about, you know, we'll give us an example of Project Lead the Way. So it's great to see the students, you know, speak to, to what they're gaining from it. That was, that was very powerful to see. One, one area that, that at the last presentation about Dowslane, that was addressed, and just thinking back to one of the budget considerations, I just wanted, in terms of, if, wondering if you could speak to how the main, what the Main Street School's ability is to, to address social emotional needs and what work might be being done with response intervention. Is that, is that, I know that at Dowslane, that's been some.
So we're, we're building, what? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So I would say we are working also on developing our, our plan for response to intervention. So we have an RTI team, is that what you're asking, what does it look like? We have an RTI team where if teachers have a concern about a student, first they're putting in tier, they'll have problem-solving conversations with their colleagues, we have interventionists, so we have a school psychologist, we have a social worker, that's where we would go if we, social, if we were concerned about a student socially, socially or emotionally, or to a colleague, right, we're seeing something, or to me. So we have a, a conversation just to problem solve what kinds of tier-one interventions could be put in place. Then we name what those tier-one interventions are, we put those in place. And then we have an RTI team where students are brought up, where teachers come to the table with the information about what's happening for that student. They come with data, like they'll come with students' work samples or anecdotal stories of things that have happened, happened with the student. And then that team will work together to really target an intervention, and we'll, we'll focus on it, and then we'll put it into place for about six weeks, we'll progress monitor it. And then that team meets back together to look at the targeted data to see if there was progress or not. And then we continue that process on, depending if the student chose progress or not, we move to tier-two or move to tier-three. What's a little bit different at Main Street School and at Dowslane is we have New York State test data, and so there are AI, you know, some of our, our AIS, our Academic Intervention Services, are mandated by the state based on student test scores. So we have students who are getting tier-two supports and even tier-three supports based on the New York State test. We're, Dowslane, they don't have that data. So it's a little, it's a little more layered in, in, in different ways at Main Street School.
Great. And all the schools are, you know, I'm so excited with the work that's happening in them, but I think what other districts don't have is a Main Street School. So it's really exciting to, to hear all of the strengths that you explained. What are the opportunities for, for Main Street School in terms of looking forward? What are, what are the, you know, you're adding a garden, you're, you have Destination Imagination, what are, what are other things that, that could, we could continue to help the Main Street School to?
So it's only my second year.
Yeah.
Right? So a lot is, a lot has happened in, in just two years. You know, I'd like to see us continue to this work. Like I don't, I'd like to see us really delve deep and continue fostering and building the supports and the structures that we've put in place, right? A lot has been in place, right? This didn't just happen because I walked through the door. Main Street School had tremendous leadership before me, and I walked into a place that was, you know, had so much happening already. And so I would like us to continue that path forward. So the teachers are on board, you know, just to give you one example of something that we're, you know, the accountable talk I share. So we've been working on discussion. Well, now we're taking it to a place where we're looking at something called, it's called Socratic Seminar. So I don't know if everyone's familiar, but it's really, it's really just a structure or protocol for talk to get to a deeper understanding of a text that we read. That's just, just a simple, you know, it's about questioning. And so now the teachers, we're starting some learning around that, and we plan to continue it when we come back. And then we'll start to see that our accountable talk sort of happened within the Socratic Seminar. So we've taught those kids those sentence starters, and as the kids come up from Dowslane, they're going to have more and more of that because they're doing that work at Dowslane. And so we'll start to see our conversations go to an even deeper place because of the work that's happening K-5, not just Main Street School. And then just so you know, it also happens at the middle school that they look at this, so they're going to get students coming up. I think we're just fostering that K-12 experience for our Irvington students.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
The, the collaborative projects with other schools around the world, how do you make those happen?
So lots of different ways. There are lots, there's Google Plus, you can join Google Plus, Google, Google Plus groups, there's Twitter, you know, there's Facebook, there are lots of different ways. But I've gone to global workshops, teachers have gone, and we come back with resources. We have a great book that we use as a resource for us about global, global education, and the author has tremendous resources that we access and we use and get a lot of ideas from. So we're definitely gathering our resources, and we're trying it. So I, one more thing I should mention is, you know, we're focused in our building on Global Seven from the technology plan. You heard Deb and Meg talk about the district technology plan. So Jesse Lubinski and myself, we work with a group of teachers. They're the ones really identifying and trying and setting up examples that we can then share with other teachers. So that also speaks to what's coming in the future. Is there, there is a core group of teachers who are really interested and invested in the technology. We're not wireless yet, so it even adds a very, a trickier layer for us to have these experiences. Takes a lot of, a lot of prep to make sure that they go well and they happen because of our technology. But that's happening awesome.
That's great, and I love the, the global aspect of it. I wish we did more of that in other parts of the Irvington district. That's phenomenal. I do know that one of the things you said at the G O B was that you were going to paint the United States.
Maybe. In front of the camera.
I think it's a great idea. So one of the, so what she was, what Joyce was going to do, well, no, but, but have.
We don't have a budget for that.
Have the United States, and then have the, have the students name each state as they walk on this map on the, in the parking lot, and be able to name each state before they leave Main Street School. I think it's a great idea.
There was a map in, at Dowslane, it might still be there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
There is out on the blacktop.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, not so much for Joyce, but for, it's been referenced twice now, this, this technology funding from the state. Has anybody anywhere in the state of New York gotten it, been able to use it?
Yeah, those.
Low, I think.
Now, those that didn't have infrastructure-related projects, and when I say infrastructure, was dealing with projects that impacted the building infrastructure. So some of those, the money has started to come through, I hear. But they have continued to change the rules and add step after step after step. And so we've had to go through some significant process, and we've had to involve our engineer, our architect to do drawings, we had to have SED submissions, we had to have tests for asbestos and lead paint. And now we've gone through all of those steps, and now we actually, our submission is sitting with SED. So then what that will allow us to do in June is the circle back. And if you recall, we had the preliminary, the board approved the preliminary plan.
We've approved it several times, haven't we?
You approved the preliminary plan once, investment plan, and so now you'll have to adopt the, the final plan. So we'll be looking to do that in, in June. And then, once you approve it, paperwork the next day goes to SED, and then the clock waits for them to give the blessing to go ahead. So our, we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed that September we'll have the approval so we can start to install the Wi-Fi. The one thing to think about with Wi-Fi, we can do that outside of school hours, so we can do that while school is in session.
Sounds like it might be more expensive to get this money than to actually.
We've spent quite a bit to get there, so.
Thank you, Joyce.
Great. Thank you, Joyce, that was excellent. Thank you very, very much.
It's not like Immigration Day that sold, you know, I sent it to the hostage in the town, Immigration Day sold out today in 12, I'm not even kidding. I think it was about 12 minutes from when I sent the emails, I got the first email that everything was filled, they didn't get a spot.
That is like immigration here.
How true.
All right, so now we're on to our consent agenda, and I think with all the personnel matters that we have on our agenda tonight.
Before we proceed, Ms. Cardia had to leave for a family, so we have to appoint.
District Clerk Pro Tem. Yes. Can I have a motion to appoint Beverly Miller as our District Clerk Pro Tem?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ben.
So on to our consent agenda, so.
Does it come with extra pay?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, a stipend for one night for two hours. We will break out the personnel items separately, and I think we should just do the consent agenda, which is everything but the personnel items. Take care of that first, so then Gail can leave if she wants.
Sorry, can you clarify what you mean by personnel items?
Everything under 12.
Okay.
We'll break that out separately.
Okay.
All right. So the consent agenda then includes everything under 10, 11, 13. So can I have a motion to accept our consent agenda for discussion? That's everything under 10, 11, and 13.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. All right, so now we have any questions on any of the consent agenda items excluding everything under 12?
I, I would also like to pull out several things.
Oh.
So did that come out of order or no?
Uh, no, that's fine. What we, just tell me what you'd like to pull out that you, for discussion or that you intend.
Well, you know, discussion can always lead to different votes.
Why don't we go ahead and have the discussion?
I can tell you what.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and have the discussion for each of these?
Yeah. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, good night.
So why don't we start just with the things that we want to discuss or pull out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 13, the, the two tax certs, 13, seven.
I thought they were out.
They, they were removed from the agenda.
Okay, I'm, I'm working, oh, I'm working off of.
An older company.
Nobody told us that.
We've removed that.
To tell us that.
13-6 is now a PTSA grant.
Oh, okay.
Five thousand dollars.
All right, all right. So are those the only two things that were removed? Just because I.
That is correct.
I'm working off a list, I have the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have questions. I guess I have questions, I don't.
Well, why don't we just go in order, John, so just quickly, anything on 10.1? No?
My questions involve 13.
Okay. 10.2, anything on the minutes? No?
No, there were, there was a correction that I gave to.
Okay.
It was a typo.
Okay, under 11, probably not, we can figure out the question then. So we're skipping over all of our personnel matters. So to 13.
13-2, the budget transfer. I didn't realize, I didn't know that we had a New York Times ad. Could we see a copy of the ad?
We can provide that, sure.
Were there, and just for the video, this is, this is for the Assistant Superintendent Business position, which has been filled. Were there responses to that ad, or did we have responses through other channels or both? You want to speak?
Well, whether we post in the New York Times, no matter where we post, all candidates have to apply on O-LAS.
So you don't really know where they originally.
No, we don't really know. I mean, just, I'll give you 10 seconds of history on this, you know, prior to something like O-LAS, you would go through the New York Times on a Sunday, and it was the, you know, who's who and where's where, pages of ads, everybody advertised in the New York Times. Now, if you go, it's like barely a quarter of a page in the, in the Sunday section. So most places, and I think that's sort of what we've actually done for some of our administrative positions, is we post those in the New York, those are the only positions we currently post in the New York Times.
Yeah, and, and not by coincidence, the New York Times has announced that they're losing money and their advertising revenue is going way down. Yeah, that was in, on their online version today. Okay. So, it'd be nice to see the ad.
Yeah.
So the tax certs, we're just going to defer those until the next time?
Yeah.
So we can have an executive session on the subject?
Yeah.
Okay. What is this thing with cherry trees?
Catherine, you want to speak to it as?
13-9.
So there, there is a group of parents whose children are.
Can we just, I see a puzzled look in our audience, somebody in the audience.
This is 13-9, a donation of cherry trees from the.
Seven cherry trees.
I have a visual.
Essentially, it's an eighth-grade class gift.
It's an eighth-grade class gift.
Is Caesar all being added here?
And the.
Thank you.
The, the wink wink is the cherry tea trees. If you think about cherry trees, you associate them with yes, Washington DC, which was a particularly memorable event for the eighth-grade class. So as part of the beautification project for the middle school.
Yeah, I see.
It's a group of about 50 parents that we know of that, whose last child is finishing eighth grade.
Is that an actual photograph or?
And other parents as well are planning to donate for these cherry trees.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
You know it's not real because look at the grass on the right.
Kids are going to climb on those trees.
Oh, they're at Dowslane too.
As long as they don't chop them.
They're good for climbing.
They're not that thick.
Yeah, that's my point.
And they're only about this big. They really won't be climbing trees.
Well, they won't be for long, at least.
I don't think they'll climb.
Catherine will personally be out there.
With a bat.
Okay. I mean, I used to spend a lot of time by the Washington cherry trees.
Well, these are Kwanzaa cherry trees, which by the way...
Kwanzaa?
Yes, so the Kwanzaa are unique in that they don't pollinate, so they're, they don't create allergy issues and they don't attract bees.
Yeah, hence the, yeah, that all fits together.
Yeah.
Interesting. And I do want to ask about, are the three bids still on our agenda?
Yes.
Where are we on the bid numbers compared to our budget for these three?
We had a spreadsheet that we handed out in our last meeting.
Okay, remind, we are, when, assuming we're able to award later this week, beginning of next, the field-related bids, we are $46,000 under budget.
In aggregate, but are we under budget for these? We're not under, but for the vestibule and the, the...
No, but in aggregate.
We were under budget a lot on some previous awarded gym, the electric, in gyms etcetera, so it was moved over, so, you know, on the aggregate. That's why when you're putting forth a bond issue to the general public, you do it as the, all the projects together so that you can move the funds around in an aggregate.
And the last thing I remember on the toilet room was we were not so sure we wanted to do that because of the cost, which came in much higher than expected.
Right.
And we're, we're now at, what is it, 100 and...
The original was like 80 per bathroom.
Right, and it's 100.
So we're awarding it to...
201.
Piazza presumably, right? 141 per one bathroom.
Right.
And how did that decision get made between meetings?
At the last meeting, it was discussed that possibly we could have just awarded, maybe just the girls' bathroom. They wanted me to look into that.
We talked about it in our last meeting.
And I checked.
Well, I know somebody in the audience raised it. I don't know if we actually talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
And we could not award just an alternate. You had to award the base.
The base.
So I passed that information.
Sorry, the, we had to do what?
So there was two bid, originally the bid was, from the first year, was the boys' restroom. And then to modify the bid to extend to the girls', we added an alternate bid, which extended, so the base bid was the boys' bathroom, the alternate was the girls' bathroom. So when we looked at the project and we checked with the legal parameters, you could not just award the alternate. To get some of this work done, we could only award the base, which then is the boys' restroom.
Okay. And is it not a realistic option to wait till we find a better price for these things?
Actually, this price is higher than the last time we went out by about 10,000, so the price keeps going up. But it's on tonight's, it's on tonight's agenda whether you award it or not, you know, that's up for discussion. That's why I listed each one of them as separate.
Yeah.
I mean, it was...
I mean, what was the 86,000 estimate based on?
The 80,000 was originally an estimate from our architects, but then there was some additional involved plumbing work and they had to do some asbestos monitoring, etcetera, that was not included in the original estimates. Because of some of that, they didn't know until they really got in there.
The original estimates were low.
Because of asbestos and plumbing? What's the nature of the additional plumbing work?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Yeah.
I mean, the feeling is that we have two bathrooms, which are both in bad shape. They both stink. The boys' bathroom apparently smells pretty hideous, according to what people have said and also my personal inspection of it when I...
You went for a sniff test?
Yes, I went for a sniff test. So the thinking is that we should at least award one of these and get it done, and then we'll deal with the other one when we can.
I guess I, my, my feeling is that, you know, I'm, I'm just, would need to be convinced that this is a reasonable amount of money for this. I'm not hearing enough tonight to be convinced of that. You know, we are way up from what we were before. You know, it's a lot of money for, it seems like a lot of money for a bathroom.
I think I included the rationale in the weekly newsletter.
My feeling is it needs to be able to be stated here if it's gonna be useful.
Okay. You can vote no.
Yeah.
It's what we're here to do, vote yes or no.
Well, we're also here to deliberate, ideally.
I feel strongly that we should award this. Because the longer, if we don't award it tonight and we go out to bid again, then you're basically talking about work that's not done until next winter and there's nothing to believe, there's no, we have no evidence to suggest that the bids are suddenly gonna come down to $80,000 each by next fall.
I know, I would just like to have a better set of information as to why this is costing more. I mean, my concern is just using the district's money, taxpayers' money responsibly, and I don't feel like I have enough information in front of me to do that. I mean, I, yeah, I also think it's a great thing to get the, get the bathrooms renovated. I hear that they're, although I haven't visited either of them, I hear that it's needed to be done, but I just think the board needs to get better information than it's gotten.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I will vote no on that, on that one. Okay. That's of the ones we have just discussed. That's the only thing I'll vote on. Vote no on.
Okay.
Okay. So if you want to pull that out, you can...
Yeah, I'll pull that out.
Any other comments on any of these from board members?
All right, so...
And, and to be clear, it's not that I think renovating the bathroom is a bad idea. I'm concerned about justifying the cost.
I understand.
So if I, just to resummarize, we're, initially it was $80,000. There was additional work into what the repairs were needed, and so we know no matter what, it was gonna be more than 80,000 after that. And so we've learned it's 140.
Right, and by the way, this isn't financed by the bond, right?
No.
This is financed by encumbered funds. Okay, so...
So if we do not award it this year, then that money will go back to fund balance.
Which, but we could then appropriate it from fund balance in the future and...
No.
No?
No.
Why not?
Because fund balance can only be used, as I've explained before, not for ordinary expenditures. It would have to be declared an emergency.
No, I'm talking about if we did it in...
You'd have to wait till the next budget cycle.
But you have to wait until the 18, 19 budget.
17.
17, 18.
Wait till next year's budget cycle to put it back in.
Yeah.
Right. If we don't spend it, by when?
June 30.
By June 30.
June 30th of this year?
Cover by June 30. And this award's only good for 45 days in New York.
Okay, so if we don't award it now, we wouldn't be able to award it until...
We'd have to rebid, go a new RFP.
Right.
Following...
Well, we'd have to, it would go back into fund balance, then we would have to reappropriate it in 17, 18.
Budget and then...
We'd have to go through the RFP process.
So it couldn't be done in the, it couldn't be done in the next, in the 16, 17.
Right.
Okay, and I think it's an awkward position to be in, but okay. I'll, I'll vote for it in that case.
Okay.
I forgot, did we have a bid for the girls' bathroom as well?
Yes, it was 95,000. That was the alternate.
It, well, on that subject is, do we have enough money to do both or no?
No, no.
Between the boys' and girls' bathrooms, we're short about $75,000.
And at this point, to go dig deeper into the general fund, that makes you uncomfortable?
It does, it makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, I mean, if we were gonna do it for next year, we would have to have, had to included it in our last budget, which we just...
Right. But to, but to do it now, to award both of them now, you would be taking the money, the additional money out of the 15, 16 budget.
Oh. But it's not budgeted in that area, but...
Yeah, this 15, 16 is where you budgeted for one bathroom.
It just turned out to be more expensive than planned.
Right, we don't have, we didn't budget enough money to do it.
Right.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, it would have to come from some line out of the current budget.
I see.
I'm not really comfortable trying to find 75,000.
It's a big chunk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now we'll vote on those consent agenda items. All in favor of 10, 11, and 13, as discussed?
Aye.
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 All right, now onto our personnel items, which includes everything under 12. So because tenure, I think there's actually a lot of items for tenure, there's the resignations. So can I have a motion to accept this for discussion? Staff resignations, 12.1.
Moved. So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second, please?
Sorry, I'm, I'm...
We're on personnel, 12.1.
And we're going through them one by one?
I'm, 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 all right.
Or is there a group?
Just on the right place, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna do that, tenure, and then...
Fine, 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 fine.
Okay?
Okay. I just was confused, sorry. Just behind you.
So I'll second it.
Okay, any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have our tenure appointments. So that is, should I read them all out? Why not? That's Meg from Downs Lane, Meg Benedetto, Nicole Christopher, Deana Lenhart, Catherine Capoe, Malane Vestal, Caroline Lozaki, this is gonna get a little...
LaHoski.
LaHoski, oops. Nicole Arvenites. Did I do that one?
No, Arvenites.
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 Now it's easy.
Okay. David Cohen, Emily Coleman, and Lauren...
Could ignore.
See, I would say Cuttiñola.
Could ignore.
Oh, yes, because I'm Italian.
At one point in time, maybe it was. Italian, right, exactly. All right, so can I, oh, can I have a motion to accept these for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor of granting tenure to these 10 people? Aye.
Aye.
Any... Those?
Congratulations to those 10 folks.
Congratulations.
You guys can leave now.
Thank you.
I think it's the first time since I've been on the board that we haven't had our tenure candidates here tonight.
And, but we should note that they'll be here on June 7 for the reception.
No, they haven't been, they've been coming for the celebration. They haven't been coming on the night that we vote. No, not on the night of the vote.
Oh, okay. All right, onto our employee letter agreements, 12.3, which is our contract, the district's contract with Dr. Core at the end of the table. Can I have a motion to accept this?
So moved. Oh, second.
Thank you. All in, any discussion?
I would like to note that I wasn't here at the executive session where the rationale for this was discussed with the board. So that makes me, that makes it difficult for me to support this. I may have, may have, I may have missed useful information, but I didn't have the opportunity to discuss it.
All in favor of 12.3?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? And any nays?
I'll have to vote no on that basis.
Okay. We have 12.4, which is our additional employee letter agreements with Elaine, Gina, Gary, Lisa Tortura, and Anne Marie Trummer. May I have a motion to consider these?
So moved.
Second.
You gotta act, act fast if you want to be the mover.
Exactly.
Can you comment on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, now we have all of our new appointments, which is 12.5, 12.6, 12.7, 12.8, 12.9, 12.10, 12.11. Nope, sorry, that's just 12.10. So I thought we could take these as a group, if that's okay. So can I have a motion to accept 12.5 through 12.10?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the addition of these?
I had a question for Dr. Core. Could you just give us an overview of the hiring process?
Sure. So the hiring process starts with a posting. It's an OLS posting. And we generally post from anywhere, depending on the position, we post anywhere from two weeks generally is the minimum for regular positions, not a leave replacement, sometimes that's shorter depending on our timeline. Anywhere from two weeks to three weeks, the position is posted. At the onset of the posting, the administrator, an administrator is assigned as the chair for that hiring process. And they develop, he or she develops a timeline for the entire process, leading to an anticipated, it backs from a board meeting. So if we're hoping to appoint somebody at a board meeting, what do we, what's our, how do we back into that timeline? That timeline gets created and we, and that person also creates a Google Doc. And that Google Doc will represent anywhere, will include anywhere from, depending on the position, three to five people who are reviewing resumes. And we individually, I review all resumes, along with generally, so the elementary positions, Meg Benedetto, Deb Marinello, Joyce Chapnick, and if it's a special ed or related service, like the speech position, or a psychologist, Gail, or Scott Palermo, or sometimes both, depending. Everybody goes in, we review resumes in our own unique way, but we go through, so as you know, the elementary, we had over 1,200 resumes that we reviewed, and we rate the candidates. Mostly the rating is to say, we would be interested in screening this person. So we don't rate them, oh, this person seems stellar, but we look at their resume, we look mostly at the experience on their resume. That's what's most important. One of the things that happens in OLS is many people just post a generic letter. So it's very rare, I shouldn't say very rarely, but very often it is not like, dear doctor, Mr. Sochila, Dr. Core, or Mrs. Chapnick. Generally, it's to whom it may concern, they're, they're generic letters that get posted on top of the resumes. Mostly what we look at is experience, we're looking for certain key elements on their resumes, from where they've been. We love people from New York City, they get great staff development, they come in with a lot of knowledge and skill and understanding of teaching practices.
Do New York City schools like to share their teachers with...
What did I say? New York City probably doesn't like to share them, but they very often don't have a choice.
Well, they're happy to pay them less, so it makes it easier.
It makes it easier. So, so we all rate them with a one, two, or three. And then what we do is we can, we consist, we continuously review that Google Doc and we keep surfacing.[1646.47] And we, we bring in for screening the candidates who received a one across the board. So we, in our own independent brains, all surface them as a one, or maybe a one slash two. Um, we generally get a lot of candidates, so we can, sometimes at the secondary level, we have to go to candidates who we saw, um, as a level two in terms of interest. But, you know, we're very surprised sometimes, you know, sometimes we think that somebody's not really a match, but then we, we bring them in. We screen a lot of candidates. Um, so for the elementary positions, we sc- after reviewing all those resumes, we screened between almost fifty people. And that screening was done, um, by me, Deb, Meg, and Joyce.
What do I, I'm not sure I understand what screening is in this context.
So screening is a, is literally a short, it's a fif- about a fifteen minute face-to-face interview where you come in, we sort of have a chance to say hello to the person, get a sense of them, hear them, hear them speak, hear them speak about teaching and learning. And the goal here is to try and surface the candidates who we want to bring back to full committee. So full committee, depending on the position, can be anywhere from, uh, you experienced full committee this year. Phil, could be anywhere from about ten, it could be as many as fourteen people depending on the position. It always includes, um, parents, uh, teachers, um, generally representation, general education teachers, special education teachers, depending at the secondary, uh, secondary level, sometimes depending on the position, it could include a guidance counselor, um, so we look to make sure that we're well represented on the elementary. Both Joyce and Deb were on the committee, as well as doing the screenings with me and Meg. Um, once we go through the committee round, we try and surface, though, the committee round is about a forty-five minute interview, about a third, I shouldn't say, it's about a thirty to forty-five minute interview. It's developed, again, usually anywhere between ten and fourteen questions, scenario-based questions, uh, pedagogy questions, um, knowledge questions, uh, when you, you know, tell us what you know about teaching and learning, uh, tell us what you know about teaching ELA or teaching math. Uh, the committee round, um, goes through a process where we collectively speak about candidates, but then we also, again, we go through a rating system where privately each person rates their person so that if someone is shy and not feeling bold enough to say what they think about that person, that's their chance to either rate them high or rate them low, but we try and surface who are the finest candidates of the pool that we've seen. Um, once we go through that process, we surface demo lessons. So for the elementary positions, we obse- we watched, um, nine demonstration lessons, uh, we had several positions. Uh, we generally look to do two or three demonstration lessons. Over the years, it's surfaced, it has surfaced different outcomes. One thing that I would say is that we don't do is we don't settle. So if we go through a process, and this has happened, uh, recent, in the last couple of years, we watched two or three demos and those candidates did not surface as viable candidates for us, we started our search again. Um, so we're very, you know, I, I think you, I think you know this, you know, we're very committed. And I don't mean this in a bad way, but when we hire teachers that aren't to the level that we want them to be, it creates, it, it's not good for anybody. It's not good for kids, it's not good for us either. Our goal is to get the, or the best candidates into our classrooms. Um, and teachers who are not only, um, good teachers, but they're leaders, they, they, they understand how to partner with parents, it, it's, it's a whole, Joyce talked a lot about like sort of the whole child, we look at the whole picture. Um, once we go through, the teacher comes for a demo lesson, for anyone who comes for a demo, they do a writing sample. And that writing sample is a reflection on their lesson. Um, so the lesson includes, um, a debrief, the demo is followed by a debrief with the gen- that's just administrators and the candidate, then followed by, um, a writing sample. And on occasion, we have, um, while it's not all the time, on occasion, we've brought a candidate back. Um, a couple of years ago at Dowslane, we were not sure, we had two candidates that were neck and neck, and we brought the candidates back and we re-interviewed them again to try and surface the right, uh, match for us, and, um, and we did. She's great, she's a fabulous teacher. So, um, it's, it's long, it's a very long and time-consuming process. And I think we try and get it right every time. Um, but I know, as Dr. Harrison has said often, we are in a place where we have pretty rigorous standards, our administrators are in and out of our classrooms all the time. And we're trying to make sure that we're selecting really great candidates who are a match for Irvington, and we try to support them and we, that's our goal, is to make it a good match.
For the, that's great, that's, it's a really impressive process. The, uh, for the committees, if a parent wants to be on a committee, how does that, how does that happen?
The, the committees are formed at the building level, so the principals form those committees with the parents. Um, it happens in a variety of ways. Uh, I think they, they open it up, it depends on the position, so if, if, again, if it's gonna be a fourth grade position, they would try and have a ma- probably select a parent of a fourth grader. Um, I would say it's somewhat informal getting the parents. It is a huge commitment, so I know for the elementary, for instance, they asked several parents who couldn't make the commitment. It's two seven-hour days, and all day, and you can't come and be there. You know, sometimes the parents say, well, I can come, but I can't get there till nine. Well, the interview started at eight, and everyone on the committee needs to see all the candidates. So it's a huge commitment, um, even when we do it one day, it's for parents who have responsibilities, so we know that that's a challenge.
Right.
So we do the best we can to try and get diverse parents. And also, just on, on that note, we really think about, we say, you know what, that parent's done that before. You know, we, we try to tap different parents, we don't really want the same parent on the committee, on, on the committees all the time. We do want different voices.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments on this group of appointments? I guess, I was just gonna say that these appointments are all replacements, uh, retiring personnel or.
Retiring or other, otherwise vacated positions.
Right, these are not.
No, no new positions.
Right, exactly. Sorry, John.
My only comment, which, um, is that I will abstain on these, and the reason is, the, the short reason is that I think the board should be consulted more on the process, and I've long said I'm not happy with how hiring is done, that, that we're not consulted or informed as well, and then we're asked to essentially to, you know, to vote yes or else. But, um, and I think that's not a, I, I think the board should have more involvement than that.
Do you have any specific suggestions about how we would be more involved?
Uh, I think we need to be informed along the pro- not, not really, I think we should be consulted at the beginning and, and kept informed, and, uh, you know, I've, in, in the past, asked to see resumes at various times, just to have a sense of who's showing up at these fields, and, you know, kept informed, and, and also be told what we, what we would like to have in candidates, what we would not like to have in candidates, and, um.
So similar to the idea that, um, when we were developing, I can't remember the profile for a principal, I think.
Principal.
That we came up, the characteristics, you're suggesting that we try to do that on a position-by-position level?
Right, and it not be done so that we're, the board is essentially presented with a fait accompli at the end of the process.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Which we are at this point.
Practically how we get involved, that's the question.
Um, yeah. Yeah, that could be, but I think it's a discussion, a deeper discussion we would have to have.
All right. Any other comments?
I, uh, would agree with John, and I think there's opportunity for the board to have a little bit more insight into, uh, new hires before we're presented with the ones and asked to vote on them. It's just a matter of a little bit more time, a little bit of a more of a heads up.
And I think probably, in my opinion, more information on the candidates than we get. And then the alternatives, it's my view, not hers.
I, I really appreciate the, the process that you explained. I know that you held really high expectations and that everyone else, uh, in, in each of these buildings also holds those high expectations. Uh, and certainly the opportunity for the board to, uh, to follow along in the process is always appreciated, so I'm sure that's a conversation that we can look forward to having.
Yeah, perhaps there are kind of milestones along the way that we can be informed in, you know, how that we are going to go in and review thousands of resumes, but, um.
Yeah, and then we've discussed the appropriateness of that as, as well, so I think it, what it sounds more like is some, some changes in the communication structures that, frankly, we've, we have talked about along the way with prior boards. And, um, and so I think we need to revisit that as a group.
Okay.
It's fine.
You know, I think, just one of the things that I thought was helpful, even in the tenure candidates, was that we had a presentation by the administrators for the candidates. And even with these, it would be helpful if we just had some sort of debrief session before we asked to vote on them. You know, when parents ask us in the community, what do you know about the teacher? If we really don't know anything more than what we see on a piece of paper before we vote on them, it sort of leaves us flat-footed and uncomfortable.
That's easy.
I think there's just probably a, a little bit more information that needs to come ahead of the voting.
Okay, with that in mind, I'll ask for a vote then. Um, all in favor of these appointments, again, um, twelve five through twelve ten, I believe it was.
Twelve, uh, twelve ten.
Twelve ten, thanks.
Twelve ten, yeah. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. All right, and we can take our last, um, uh, few appointments here, I think, as a group, uh, unless there's anything wants, anybody wants to appoint, pull them out. We have twelve point one, appointment of a senior office assistant, appointment of CSE chairperson. Change in appointment, so it's acceptable to treat these as a group, is that okay to everyone?
Yeah, just maybe for the video, you should be clear what the numbers are.
Yes, I will, but I'm just checking to see if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept twelve point one one? I have twelve eleven, which is the appointment of a senior office assistant, through twelve, uh, fifteen, which is the recission, recession, rescission of an appointment.
A different appointment.
Can I have a motion to accept those for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any, uh, questions relating to those before we vote? Comments? Yep? All right, um, all in favor of, uh, accepting these, most of these actions?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I know we only have a few items left, but, um, if we could just briefly adjourn.
Sure.
Yeah. Mother Nature.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, we'll take a short adjournment of, um.
Or recess.
Five minutes, back here at nine fifteen. Yeah, it's okay to leave.
You can leave.
Someone couldn't wait any longer.
We didn't have as normal, um, as normal a visit before, which I do too, before, before the meeting after the.
Exactly.
Through office, it's.
Oh, right, the schedule.
Yeah.
It's amazing what a good little school, Main Street School.
It is.
It really is, just a treasure.
It's, well, it's.
And I think Joyce is doing a great job.
Yeah, I, um, um, I think, um, it was probably more or less an accident that we ended up with a school with two grades, but it's worked out well.
Yeah, it has worked out very well. And it's a great transition between Dowslane, Middle Street.
Right, and I think it, it's a good age for those kids, and then you have the aggregate of Dowslane, which works.
Yeah.
My son was in kindergarten at Dowslane when it was still.
Oh.
Still fifth grade and stuff. There's a bigger, there's a bigger spread there than, it's nice to have a smaller group at Dowslane.
Yeah, I think so.
So there's your future colleague there. I get to step down. Yeah, oh, it is, yes.
Oh, check. Check from Gail, twenty dollars. Weren't those Destination Imagination kids cute tonight?
They were, they were, they were so cute.
They were adorable. I was looking at the white kid, who was even younger, sitting here with his father, and he was just so cute.
I think it is so cute when they have the younger siblings who are, you know, three, and, you know, all fidgeting, 'cause they don't know how to sit still yet, all fidgeting in such an adorable way.
Yeah, it's so true, and he kept putting his hand on his dad's leg, you know, just, you could sort of see he was bored. Yeah, he pulled out.
You know, he's a blight on humanity.
He is a blight, I'm.
I mean, I, I would, um, I'm not gonna vote Republican anyway, but I would take Trump over Cruz any day.
Trump is a mess.
So that means that the, um, poor little girls will not be safe in their bathroom until Cruz out.
Yeah, it's bummer.
Yeah, that was his issue. Who's gonna be Trump's vice president?
It's a good question.
Or can, vice president candidate, optimistically.
Who would ru- who will run with him?
Well, yeah, it has, and it has to be somebody, um.
Who's gonna sell their soul?
Oh, there's plenty of people who would run with him, but, there has to be somebody who doesn't have such a good job, you know?
Well, you know the story of Teddy Roosevelt, right? New York State couldn't stand him, so they.
Yeah.
Made him the vice president candidate, only to have him be the president when McKinley got shot.
People getting shot?
Yeah, President McKinley.
McKinley, yeah.
It's old news.
Just a couple hundred, just a hundred years or so.
Yeah, a hundred and fifteen years ago. That flies when you're getting shot.
Starting to feel a hundred.
Okay, why don't we move on, even though we've lost Michael?
Something drew, drove you to tears?
Yeah, my eyes are bothering me.
Oh, yeah, look at your eyes.
Do you have allergies?
No, I have, uh, chronic dry eye, as the commercials say.
Really?
You take, uh, drops?
Yeah, that's, I just went to take care of, 'cause I can barely keep them up.
Yeah, it's, uh.
A little painful.
All right, that basically gets us through our consent agenda. We have no committee left at all, now that Mr. Graber has left.
We have the virtual committee.
We have a virtual, we have a virtual committee. Um, any other items? Uh, we're now at the Board of Education discussion. We covered the one that John, um, asked at the beginning. No?
The, well, I mean, I guess the, the one statement is, uh, that I personally have been reaching out to the, the town of Greenberg because I feel that there's a lack of information. Whoop. Thank you. Uh, I've been reaching out to the town of Greenberg because I feel that there's a, a lack of detail uh, when it comes to the reassessment and its effect on our, the residents of our district. Um, I guess it must be inundated because we, we, it was indicated that we would receive some information, uh, but we have not.
Finer sent something.
That was, uh, it was a letter about, uh, their request to have a three-year.
Three-year, okay.
Mitigation, but in terms of, you know, they, they've put out information in terms of the overall town of Greenberg, how many people saw their assessments, uh, go up, stay the same, go down. Uh, we don't have that in terms of our own district, and that's the type of information that, that I hope we can receive.
Yeah, we requested that back in early April, I think it was.
It's been, it's been a bit.
When that map came out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think in general, there were more increases of assessments than decreases in, in the school, in our district.
We don't, we don't have the specific details, though.
No.
Yeah.
No.
We were, we've never seen the commercial properties.
Right, no, we haven't seen those, that would be interesting.
Yeah.
And I don't really understand what they're doing, the whole issue with condos and co-ops and how that's being treated, anyway. It's a lot of, I'm not sure that, you know, it's directly relevant for anything we, we do, but it's interesting to know.
Well, I think, uh, there were a lot of comments in the budget process about the effects of reassessment, and so we didn't actually have any detail related to our district, uh, so we were just taking the pulse of the community as best we could, but with no real information.
Yeah. Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Finer, if you're watching, please see if you can give us that information.
Yeah, 'cause we know you are.
They really can't find any more compelling television.
I'll watch you if you watch me. All right, so any other comments? No? So the old business carryforward, we put together, yes, John?
I do have some things for that, but it sounds like you do too, so you go ahead.
For the old business carryforward?
Did you look at the list?
Yeah.
Or do you have an edition of what's on the list?
I don't know what's the list.
Well, here's the list.
Oh, I didn't see. Um, I just assumed there would be nothing on that item, and I didn't look. Oh, is it on, sorry, is it on the paper too?
Yeah, it's on the paper.
Oh, okay, I didn't, um, so the way I do this electronically, I'm just never expect those things to have anything under this.
We populated it.
Well, we started to.
Okay, so what does this list meant?
So this is the list of things that we have talked about in public at one time that require additional, uh, work on the part of the board, or on the part of the administration.
It was supposed to just be able to circle back so that we had some responses for questions that were raised in previous, uh.
Right.
Yeah, I have, I would have a few things to add to that list.
Okay.
All right, then now's your chance.
Okay, and they're not necessarily public, but there's no reason they can't be public. Um, uh, it's, it's sort of implied under contact sport safety, but it's not really the same thing, which is the, this, whether, whether or not we should continue to have football or not.
That's, that's what that is.
Yeah, but I think we're kind of dodging the issue a little bit by calling it that, but.
I think inevitably, when you get into the issue, the, the delineation of when concussions are.
Right.
Uh, one too many is, is, comes into play.
Yeah, but, but the question is, I mean, is football qualitatively a different.
Right.
Level of problem relative to other sports where concussions do happen, such as soccer, and, um.
Well, I think you have to view football relative to all those other things as well.
Yeah.
Lacrosse and soccer, which is why it's phrased that way.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, are those the main, wrestling, I suppose, too, is a big one, yeah? Um, hockey, we do have a hockey team of sorts, right?
Yeah.
We do. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's, um.
We have field, do we have a ice hockey team?
We have a shared ice hockey team with one other district, I think.
We pr- we actually produced a professional hockey player.
Oh, that's right, we did, yes, I know.
It's rare, we, do we have any other successful professional athletes?
I can think of at least one.
I was just reading about.
Who?
Um, it's going back a long time, I, his name is Eric Abagu.
And what sport?
Football, played in the New York Jets.
Oh, that professional?
Hey.
You can tell I'm not running for reelection.
I'll bet so on.
Okay, um, the, the other things that have, I would like to continue to know where we are in the planning committee, which keeps, you know, is months behind schedule.
Yeah, and, uh, prior, our prior communications, we talked about having, um, discussion and presentation on our progress on June seventh.
Okay, that's very late.
You're talking about strategic planning?
Yes.
Well, we had our final meeting, our final, committee meeting, well, not a final, but a final so far, yeah.
So, the snow, I mean, the basic story is that the, the snowstorm canceled our last meeting, we were able to reschedule it, uh, last week, and we are due to hear back from our facilitator in the next week or so, uh, following that last meeting.
With the strategic vision and, um, objectives, strategic objectives. So, we should have something.
Oh, you're still waiting for those, okay.
From her, she's rewriting what the committee came up with and putting in a cohesive.
And then, does the committee consider whether it supports that, or how is that going to work?
Well, the committee came up with it, so that's.
Is the committee going to write the board a report?
No, so what we've done is, we've taken, um, the work of the committee, which has been most valuable, and, um, we are going to, that's what we're going to highlight on June seventh. We are going to put together a subcommittee of the board and the administration to work on finalizing what the objectives and goals would be. There will be also an additional round of, um, data collection, uh, to inform those final steps, to help, um, inform, um, opinions and to gain some additional feedback, but also to have some opportunity for the, uh, community to weigh some options that may be before them, related to programmatic decision-making in the future. The objective really is to provide the board with a comprehensive tool that will be able to, um, guide future decision-making.
That has the buy-in of all our, all the, all the folks involved in terms of students, staff, parents and taxpayers.
Students, parents and taxpayers?
Parents, I said, community, I mean, our stakeholders, everyone who, who is.
Well, though, people on the committee, right, yeah, but not, not, not the thousands of people not on the committee.
No, the data collection.
The data collection, that's a big survey.
Oh, okay, oh, we're going to do a survey.
We want to do a deeper survey than those that we've administered.
With, with the large, with the large respond, you know, try and get a good response rate to that survey.
Okay, okay, so that's all in the future.
Yes.
But we'll hear a report on June seventh.
A, a report with a, a timeline that, um, so that will lead us to our completion.
The other thing that I know that we had some email traffic about, and there was never a response on, is wanting to get more information on college applications and acceptance and, and success. And, you know, my ideal is to have anonymized, if necessary, but a student-by-student list of where they've applied and where they've gotten in or not gotten in, so we can have just really an understanding of what the nature of our, you know, success and our failure, and I understand the board used to get information like that years ago, but, um.
Yeah, so the, the challenge, and we can certainly do that, the challenge that we have is that we're at the mercy of, um, students self-reporting, uh, because we don't gain all of that information, and oftentimes, what happens once a student is accepted into the school of their preference, that they kind of fall off on reporting the other information, and we do provide, um, reminders, um, but we do have an incomplete data set.
Yeah, we, we know where they apply, right, because, at least where the student, the school has to send materials to.
Correct.
Right, we just don't know, and we don't necessarily know what the outcomes of those applications are.
Sure.
Still, nice to know that.
Yep.
You know, and it has to be, yeah, okay, um, because I think we're, we're, you know, we're flying based on, we, we, we collect lots of rumors and partial information and doubts, but it's not, it's not a great approach.
Does Guidance actually collect in a sort of comprehensive way, where all the students are applying?
It's all tracked through Naviance, yes.
So, that's actually, so that's not student-entered data, that is, the Guidance counselors?
It's, I believe it is, I, I don't want to, to say with certainty, but I believe that it is all tracked accurately through Naviance, yes.
So, that actually, I mean, that would be interesting, I think, just to see where students are.
We'll, we'll, we'll generate the, the report.
Yeah, and Naviance, um, I believe does have, I know I saw, when my son was applying to schools, has, you know, if, you can see for a given university you're applying to, uh.
Your chances of getting.
Well, it, it shows you a, a scatter plot based on, I think, GPA and SATs.
Or maybe ACTs, but I, he, he did the SATs, so we looked at that.
And who got accepted in, in various categories, accepted, deferred, whatever, rejected. And, uh, so, Naviance probably has a lot of that information, although they may not track it from student to student.
How many meetings do we have before the, the end of?
Two. It would be two.
Two, two meetings. The, one thing I don't see on the old business list is the transportation study.
Oh, yeah.
It's an executive session.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, why is it, can you say in public why it's executive session?
Yeah, because, um, there's the matter of the recommendation from the, um, uh, transportation, um, analysis.
Oh, I remember.
That would impact areas, and we need to have counsel on whether that, in fact, is permissible.
So, we have a legal question, and then we maybe have a.
Yes.
None, once we get beyond that, we have a, the opportunity for a public discussion.
Yes, there will be.
Wow. Sanders won in Indiana.
Sanders won?
That's what the, that's what my phone just said.
Cruz dropped out.
Cruz dropped out.
Bare, small, short, narrow win in, in Indiana.
Any others, John?
Uh, no.
So, how do we decide what we're doing in the next two meetings?
Well, we're not doing all these things.
We're, we're clearly, but there, I think, some things that we can speak to and understand that this is an area that we're going to chip away from, right, and, and try to make some progress. And some items I think we can, I can report on, and others I think it's, uh, maybe some discussion for us to share. The one that I, I would like to report on, and Dave couldn't be here tonight, I would have asked him to, to speak to it himself, is the National Honor Society. We are absolutely in the process of launching the National Honor Society for the, um, high school. As a part of this process, we have to establish an, um, Honor Society Faculty Council, that has been meeting regularly to set up the logistics around it, uh, and to, um, they're reviewing sample criteria and selection process from other schools, and, um, that of which is, uh, recommended by the organization. And they actually have, uh, another meeting scheduled for, um, this coming Monday, at which time they're hoping to be able to finalize that specific information. And then, as we approach the end of the school year, um, that, um, the students who, um, qualify and meet the standards, pretty much a GPA requirement is one of the, um, uh, obvious things that we'd be looking to. All of our rising eleventh and twelfth grade students who meet the criteria would be invited to apply. So, even though it's taken a little bit longer than, uh, was anticipated, we'll have that opportunity to capture our current juniors, so that will be able to be a part of their transcript, um, as they're moving to college and, and, and make, completing those applications. And then, it will also include our rising, uh, juniors. There will be communication that comes out, um, from the, um, school, uh, right at the end of the school year that will encourage, um, the, uh, application of those students that would meet the criteria. Aside from GPA, there's other items that are typically included in this, that include, you know, character, leadership, community service as well, are, are typical traits. So, this information will become forth, be forthcoming from the school in the next few weeks. And, um, again, it will provide the opportunity for our current eleventh, uh, all rising eleventh and twelfth graders to be able to be identified as National Honor Society members.
I know one of the challenges was to have a, um, teacher, mentor, whatever, but they.
Yeah, mentor, advisor.
Have we, have we resolved that, is there an advisor that's.
I don't remember who particularly advisor, there, it's actually been working as committee.
It's been working with a committee, so I'm not sure who's surface jet is, who will be the advisor.
Moving forward, but there have been, I have to say, a group of staff members that have really taken interest and ownership in this process, and it's been a collaborative effort at the school.
Right.
May I suggest on the technology committee, since Catherine brought this up very early on, I think it was, it may be the first week of September. Catherine, could you kind of create what you see as the mission and the scope and composition of the committee? And then, it would be great to even have that as early as June seventh or June twenty-eighth, because, of course, if we are going to establish such a committee, that, um, we want to do it for next year, right?
Sure, I'm sorry, mission scope and what was the other thing?
Composition, and I guess it should also, obviously, if you could work with Dr. Core on it, because I know there already is a technology committee that is composed of, uh, not just, uh, staff, but also, community members, but it just doesn't include board members.
Yeah, so I think that, so the bill, the district, the, um, within district, which are teachers, is the E T D T, it's our educational technology, um, and we did have a community-wide one last year, we had, but we have not actually reinstated that for this year, not for any reason, we're not avoiding it, I think, um, but that is something that we definitely do want to do next year, so it would make perfect sense.
And if I recall also, that your scope was different, right, because that's, that was really focused on curriculum and tools used in classrooms, whereas I think yours, you were also thinking of like best practices in terms of purchasing and, and new, um, products that we might want to consider, so.
But there's a, I think, a direct linkage to it all, so, I don't think it actually happens in isolation of the other work. I think there's some parallel and crossover.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
I'm, I'm happy to work with Dr. Core.
Great, great, um, with respect to, the one item was field committee, and when, um, Catherine and Phil had suggested the list, um, on it, I admit that was the one area I felt, um, a little foggy on, and.
I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah, and that's why I was looking in your direction, um, so, thinking what.
Thanks, I'm foggy on it too, so.
Yeah, well, so, the basic idea is that, um, that I, I served on the fields committee, and in the, uh, course of doing all our research, there are definitely, particularly with the, the new Mizaros field, you know, practices and, and protocols that would be different than a, a normal grass field, um, for example. Uh, and just in general, uh, with the, the use of our athletic fields and, and the, the care of our athletic fields, the idea is that a committee perhaps could include, um, you know, our athletic director, a few coaches, maybe people that were on the fields committee to, to come, to just review and, and, and provide, uh, some recommendations in terms of protocols, so, for example, with Mizaros field, that might mean, you know, it's clear signage about, about what's not allowed on the field, very clear standard for all the teams that use the field not to use, uh, regular cleats, because that's, the injuries that come from that kind of field are because you're wearing the wrong kind of cleats, the regular field turf cleats versus, uh, you know, a smaller tread. You know, there's all sorts of things that I think would come out of it that are new to our, our practice and use in athletics, and, so just to make sure that, uh, with new fields, that, that we're, the kids are, the students are understanding how to use it, and that we're all on the same page.
So, and I guess the idea is that, although it's similar to the buildings and grounds, such a committee wouldn't meet nearly as frequently as we do, because we meet sort of almost monthly, but kind of every six to eight weeks, so I think.
I think in this case, it's probably trying to, to align with the, uh, the, the start of using the new field, so, if they were created now, if they were created in, in late summer, that it'd be ready by, you know, around the same time that we're ready to open Mizaros field, for example.
I would think that, that there would be, um, some real benefit in assuming that we're on the path to awarding a bid, um, and, within the week, that, um, we would probably want to engage representation from the manufacturer, because we want to make sure that our practices, um, fully take advantage of the warranty that would come with the carpet. So, I, I certainly would be happy to, to assemble that committee, and, um, maybe I'll follow up with you later in the week about some ideas about, um, how we'd solicit membership and to build upon the list of, of folks that you mentioned.
Okay.
Other item I thought we could address was talking about, uh, theater manager, theater, and it was an issue, that we initially, um, explored in looking to try to, it was, um, suggestion of Mr. Hannah, to look at opportunities to increase the use of our facility, um, and doing so, we'd be able to introduce some added revenues. And then, along with that, we would, um, potentially have the opportunity to have some, um, enhanced management and, uh, services available for all programs. It was one of those, I think, through our conversations, that I think we ran it to a bit of a, a dead end, in that we didn't find lots of opportunity for that regular, consistent use during the school year. There was some possible use, um, during the summer, because generally speaking, we're not using the theater during the summer months. But, um, we, I think we really kind of ran into, you know, it, up against the wall and looking at, and Beva, is that your calendar that was created? Went through and looked at during the school year, there's only a handful of days here and there when it's not being used for some form of production, and I know it's kind of a.
I shared that with the board.
Yeah, we shared this, but you kind of look at the illustration, it's only times when we don't have our own groups booked in there for some level of production is when we have breaks. And recognizing, say, we have a concert tomorrow night, well, this whole week leading up to it, it's, the stage is set for the performance and for the rehearsals that lead up to it, so we're not in a position where we can open the theater for that, and even if we've attended, um, any of our community events recently that have happened in there, and I'm trying to think what the last event was, um, you know, it was still after the play that, um, the guest speaker was literally walking around the catwalk, um, that was left from the, from the play.
The teenage brain, was that the?
Yes, yes.
Well, I mean, I think you referenced one area that could still be explored, which is summer. It's a theater, it's one of the few theaters in the area with air conditioning, uh, and so, I would suggest, uh, we, at least, try and put together a couple people who could put some thinking into, uh, it's probably too late for this year, but going into the, the next summer, is that an opportunity to, to get some use and some revenue, um, from one of the area production groups? I know some of them have summer camps, some of them may want to do summer camps, and that would be a great opportunity for them.
I think one of the limitations that we see for this year is going to be the extensive construction projects we're anticipating.
So, the summer's not good.
I think who would potentially hinder.
I think it's too late for the summer, yeah.
So, I, I think that would be difficult. I think one of the, the realistic, more practical conversations that, um, that we, we need to start having, and it's actually on one of our cabinet, uh, meeting agendas for next week, I think it is, that looking at, um, how we're going to kind of lead that A V squad, uh, of the kids that are technically inclined, that work with, in, in the production side of things, so we can, I can think of a, a few students' names that come right to mind, that to take tremendous ownership over the production of light and, and sound. And, um, you know, we have some shifts afoot in looking at Diana Salinow, uh, since, let's say, retiring, and what the ripple effects become with that, because in working with Diana, I brought a level of expertise and some partnerships with other folks that worked very, very closely with our students. And, uh, that now you think about, well, um, some of our other staff members may potentially move into other roles down the road, and so that we have to identify what our support structure is going to be to make sure, one, we continue to be able to deliver the quality that we have, but how do we build upon that and provide our students with the guidance and leadership to continue to work in the areas that they're so passionate with? So, that's one of the challenges that we're going to be working through over the next month.
And, and, and as you said, you know, an opportunity which is, I, I think, uh, you know, Catherine and other, uh, community members have suggested about the opportunity for partnerships, I mean, we're a short distance from, from New York City, the theater capital, you know, at least here in the U S, and, uh, I mean, so certainly, with all those changes, there's concerns, but there's also those opportunities that we could look at as we're in a transition.
The real challenge becomes the, the budget associated with it, and trying to, one, identify how we could absorb that internally, and if that's not possible, whether from a, just a capacity standpoint, we don't have the people to do it, or we don't have the people with the talent available to do it. And then, so if we step outside of that, um, you know, folks are going to be looking for compensation.
Yes, which brings us back to that, that theater manager idea, because I think if, at some point, if you have to rethink how it works, obviously, it doesn't work now, but I think there's an opportunity for. there's an opportunity for professionalism for support of the theater, the kinds of questions that you're raising, I understand that the current calendar hasn't worked with that, but in a time of transition, there may be an opportunity to look at something like that, because it is an opportunity to also have the revenue to support those kinds of programs.
Great, okay, anything else?
No, other things or items that, well, I think maybe the one thing we can speak to as a final item, and kind of look to Catherine and Michael a little bit, the idea of looking at school community surveys, and I think that through our completion of the strategic planning process, not only are we going to have some initial efforts at community-wide surveys, but I think it will establish opportunity for us moving forward to establish some practice in and around what the types of questions that we're looking to have answered, that the community can be of assistance with, and I would foresee that as a, a structure that would be built into our plan on a long-range basis, because one of the objectives that's growing out of it is community engagement and participation, so I don't want to say that we're necessarily entirely crossing the issue off, but I think it's going to be enveloped within the long-range planning initiative, and I just thought, mention that, I don't know if there's other commentary on your end.
Well, I think you started it with the food survey.
Yes.
Well, I mean, not just that, we've had, we've had a number of surveys that have done quite well over the course of the year, and others that haven't, and so I think we're learning there's a way to have more success with how we survey, take those lessons.
The response rate to the food survey.
Yeah, and then we had the, the technology survey, the athletic survey, so there's a number of surveys that have done quite well.
And they're currently, Mark Gallops, who is our partner with the Food Service City survey, is actually going through the first round of feedback for us for a meeting for tomorrow, and our, our participation is pretty high, I think he said initially, the upper 30s or mid 30s.
Yeah.
From parent, community, and staff is high in student participation.
Thirty-six percent or?
Thirty-six percent.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a good response rate.
What's the denominator when they do that?
I think we were, I'm trying to remember the number of households, 1,400 households, roughly.
But if each.
So, parents, students, and staff are three different groups.
Right, but if two different parents both answer the same household gets counted twice.
We'll be able to present.
Like, I got, I got lots of emails on this from all sources.
Needless to say, a good response rate.
Did you respond?
I tried to, but the survey quickly didn't make, stop making sense, so I stopped. There was something about my situation that made it impossible for me to continue, I've forgotten now, I tried.
Okay, so.
Did Aramark in any way participate in that survey, or was it something we did and we were going to give them the results?
They were aware of it, because they do their own survey.
Right.
And they were certainly aware of what we were doing, and we were trying not to step on each other's toes.
Okay.
As soon as we get the results tabulated, we'll make it available to the board.
Great, I'm assuming the community as well.
Of course, of course.
Okay, sorry.
What was the response rate for students, I'm sorry, I hate to.
We've, we've had, I don't know the number off the top of my head now, four through 12, we've had a very high rate, and because of a, an issue, we were trying to do third grade as well, but there was an issue that surfaced where they were unable to do it on the day that it was scheduled, so I actually have a question in to Mark right now, even though that he's looking at the first round of data, we've identified an opportunity to do it this Friday, if he can still include that data set, so we're, I'm just waiting to hear back from Mark, I emailed him earlier today.
Students had a 64%.
That's great.
Response rate, overall.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah.
And I don't know how.
Higher in particular grades, or higher in particular cohort?
No, well, slightly higher in nine through 12.
Were they being surveyed also by email, or were they being given?
All email.
Provided, students, no, students, we provided, directly provided them with access during the school day, provided them with access.
Which grades?
Four through 12.
Students, students were, we didn't do students in K through 3, right, parents.
Yeah, and we may include third grade in the same, so.
Okay, so our next public meeting is May 17th, our election, because we certify the election at nine o'clock on May 17th at Main Street School, and after that, it's June 7th, remember that, and after that, it's June 28th.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mind everybody to vote.
Yeah, and please vote on May 17th, it's important. I have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Feel bad for the local newspapers that we don't have a contested election.
A lot of lost, a lot of lost revenue.